Thank you, Mr. IT man. Got my green light going, appreciate that. I would like to call this meeting of the Glendora City Council to order at 5:00 PM, and welcome all in attendance. For all those watching, my name is David Friedenthal. I am the mayor of the city of Glendora and shall serve as the presiding officer over the city council meeting. In consideration of others and the business to be conducted, kindly silence your phones and electronic devices, and refrain from speaking unless recognized. Again, this is a public meeting for the community of Glendora. We appreciate and respect your participation. For the record, all members of the city council are present and appear ready to conduct our business. At this time, I would like to ask the city attorney to read us into closed session. However, I do understand there's a last-minute item that we would like to include, so I shall ask--
Yeah, Mayor, there is an item that came up, as an urgency item, that came up after the posting of the agenda, that relates to a friend of the court brief that would include an additional closed-session item. So if we have a roll call and we get a majority, four-fifth vote, we can add it to the agenda.
Very good. I would entertain a motion to add that third item to the closed-session item.
So moved?
So moved by Mr. Alois, second by Mr. Thompson, and invite us to please vote. Item passes 5-0, is unanimous, so yes. And, Mr. Attorney, if you would kindly read the items into closed session.
Yeah, sure. So on that last item, the urgency item, a closed session will be held pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D4, because the city is considering whether to join as amicus curae in a petition to the California Supreme Court seeking review of the decision of the Second Appellate District in the case known as Commune DTLA LLC versus City of Redondo Beach, and case number B336042. In addition, there are two other closed-session items tonight. One is regarding a performance evaluation, which will be held pursuant to Government Code Section 54957 for the position of city manager, and a labor negotiations closed session, which is authorized pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6 regarding labor negotiations over the position of city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. At this point, I would like to open for public comment and invite members of the audience to address this legislative body. Speakers may speak up to three minutes only on the agenda items of closed session at this time. Is there anyone wishing to speak? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, have we received any correspondence?
We have not, Mayor.
We have not.
We're back from a closed session, which closed out at 6:55 and we're reconvening at 7:02. Thank everybody for being here. I would like to invite our city attorney, please, to report out from our closed session.
Yes, Mayor, the council met in closed session on three items. The first was a public employee performance evaluation, which was held pursuant to Government Code Section 54957 regarding the position of the city manager. And a review was conducted and a report was performed. And a privileged and confidential evaluation was held, but there was no other reportable action item on that matter. And the second item was a closed session held pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6 regarding labor negotiations with the city manager. The outcome from that meeting was first that the approval of a future contract amendment to the city manager's contract would be presented on the next council's agenda. And the council approved a $15,000 retention bonus for this year. The final item was an item that arose after the posting of the agenda, which required council action. And in that matter, the closed session was held pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D4 with respect to the city's consideration of whether to join as amicus curae in a petition to the California Supreme Court in the case known as Commune DTLA LLC versus City of Redondo Beach. And the city voted, the city council approved a 5-0 vote to join that friend of the brief action. That's the end of my report.
Okay. Thank you, Danny. With that, I'll open up our regular session of the meeting and welcome. Tonight, my name is, yeah, welcome here tonight. My name is David Friedendahl. I'm the mayor of the city of Glendora and serve as the presiding officer over city council meetings. I would ask that in consideration of others, if you'd kindly silence your phones and electronic devices and refrain from speaking unless recognized. We look forward to conducting our business. And again, this is a public meeting for the community of Glendora, and we welcome and appreciate your participation. Tonight, we will have an invocation led by Pastor Dr. Michael Cordage of the First Baptist Church of Glendora with a pledge of allegiance from a local soccer star, Gino Ricci. So Pastor Cordage, and if you could please stand.
Let's pray. Brothers, we come here tonight, we want to thank you for the men and women who founded this nation with freedom as its cornerstone. For nearly 250 years, men and women have fought to keep these freedoms sacred. And Lord, as we consider yesterday Veterans Day, we want to honor and give honor to where honor is due. As we want to honor our veterans tonight that we have, who have served this nation so that we, as its citizens, can retain those very freedoms that we have fought for. Lord, I pray that you would be with our council members tonight, that you would give them wisdom and understanding and grace as they serve our community, that they would do just that, Lord, that they would serve the people in their decisions. And we would ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Mr. Ricci.
Put your right hand over your heart, face the flag. Ready? Begin.
I pledge the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor, always inspiring. And thank you, Mr. Ricci, very well. Okay, that brings us to opportunities to reorder or add to the agenda. Is anyone wishing to do such? Seen, hearing, none. We'll move on to our public comment period. I will open public comment, inviting members of the public to address this legislative body. Speakers are limited to three minutes, speaking once, both on, on both, on or off agenda items. If you're in attendance, I invite you to please fill out a speaker card. Looks like this. You can get them on the front counter or on the back counter. And kindly complete the card and submit it to our recording admin before the end of public comment period. With that, I'll open public comment to our first speaker and invite Mr. Moore. Mr. Bob Moore, welcome.
Thank you. I'm here to oppose the purchase of five brand-new 2026 police vehicles at a cost of $331,000. Item number 15, numero quince, on the agenda. We need to create a contingency fund for the $331,000 instead to assist Glendora residents in dire need of health care assistance, to feed starving Glendora residents, and house Glendora residents at a time when health care, food, and housing assistance is being ripped away from 40 million-plus Americans and 51 million Americans right now, starving and scrambling for food, not including 142 Americans at risk of losing their health care due to the evisceration of Medicare and Medicaid. You think this doesn't affect Glendora? All of this in the richest country on earth. This agenda is a list of your priorities. You prioritize police cars over people. You show a complete lack of concern and awareness for other people. Just recently, I witnessed a guy carrying around a blanket, looking for a place to bed down here in Glendora. This past spring, in a Glendora strip mall, I heard a bicycle rider yelling he hadn't taken a shower in three months. What Glendora do you guys live in? Whom do you actually represent? Reprioritize your agenda. Talk about building bathrooms with shower facilities on public land staffed by city government. with shower facilities on public land staffed by city government employees, and provide travel-sized toiletries to people when they show up in need of taking care of basic bodily requirements. We don't need another five new police cars. Their cars are fine, practically brand-new, and fine running order, which we, the residents, already pay for. This particular agenda item is a regressive, oppressive, another facet of segregation, and represents a callousness by this city government and its failure to recognize the urgent needs of its people, and the impending threat of these Trump regime Republican Party cuts to our social safety net and public services, the likes of which we have never seen before in the history of the United States. Thank you very much. Good evening. Y otra vez. Muchas gracias. Buenos noches, gobierno.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. I don't have any additional cards at this time. Anyone else wishing to speak who has not completed one? No. Okay. Madam Clerk, have we received any correspondence?
We have not, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Then, as such, I shall close public comment, and bring it back to the members for statements. And I'd like to begin with Shawna.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd first like to acknowledge all the working parents who are getting through November, like me. It's, November's the hardest month of the year for working parents with days off of school and whatnot, so I see you. Secondly, I would just like to say I had a wonderful time at our veterans' events this week. And last week, we were, or I was honored to serve lunch to some of our veterans at the LaFetra Center. And I have to say, that was probably my most enjoyable event that I have attended since sitting in this seat. So that was a lot of fun. And then our ceremony yesterday was fantastic as well. So I'll just say again, thank you to all of our veterans. We owe you a debt of gratitude. That's it for me.
Okay. Thank you, Shawna. Bring it back to Mendel.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, and I want to echo what has just been said about the vets. We celebrate you, celebrate each and everyone who served, the families that stayed at home and waited for you to come home. And sadly, some didn't come, come home. And so we just say thank you for what you have done. Just got word that our government is open now. I don't know all of the details, but I am thankful that Washington has done the right thing, at least to open it. And I hope those that were not able to work and get paid will get paid immediately. And hopefully, we can, we can parcel out all, all of the facts there, but it's good news that it is open. Want to mention that the stroll is coming up on the 21st of this month. I'm sure that Joe will be talking a little bit about that. But the stroll is just a special time where the city comes, and everybody that lives here comes and enjoys the kickoff of the season, and hopefully, it won't rain, and hopefully, it'll be a little cold, because that makes the event really nice. So I hope that everybody will be a part of that. And lastly, at the end of the month, we will gather to, you know, say thanks. And although this year has been a difficult year for a lot of folks, I do hope that we can all pause and say thank you. Thank you for the life that we have, the friends that we have, the city that we have, the fact that we are, we are free. And I hope that we'll all take time to extend that to neighbors, workers, people that we go to church with, school with, because we are blessed to be here. And I wish that, that you will have a special day there. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mendel. Karen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for setting that up for me, Mr. Thompson. On the subject of gratitude, it is important for us to be thankful, not just on the fourth Thursday of November, but on a regular basis. It's a proven fact that it promotes happiness and well-being when you can pause to find something to give thanks for, or someone to say thank you to. And we had that opportunity at Veterans Day, but I would encourage everyone, anytime that you see a veteran, thank them for their service. And when you are grateful, to put that into action. The community did so this last week. The Glendora Community Coordinating Council put together 280 boxes of food to distribute to families. That was due in part to folks in town contributing food, especially the schools contributed a lot of food. So thank you to everyone that put that gratitude into action. Shepherd's Pantry continues to do that on a regular basis, and I would encourage folks to show your gratitude for what you have by donating to them. Their need has increased quite a bit. And also, Real Life Church, on the second and fourth Saturdays, distributes food. So there are many places that are doing that, that if you want to get involved, you could help out and demonstrate your gratitude by giving back. Also, that leads us to giving thanks for people who have contributed to our lives, making them better, and also improving our community life. One of those people I would like us to ask tonight to adjourn our meeting in memory of Dr. Pat Bushman. He was affectionately known as Dr. B., served as superintendent for Glendora Unified School District, and was very involved in the Kiwanis. And also, I don't know, maybe Joe Cena knows how many years he served as the chair of the Citizen of the Year Committee, that, forever, yes. So that was just another place in which he was an icon. But Dr. B. was, even though he did not sleep at night in the city of Glendora, he spent most of his waking hours here, either through his job, through his involvement in Kiwanis and other service projects. He was here in Glendora dedicating his time and effort to help children and help people in general. And so tonight, I'd ask that we adjourn our meeting in memory of Dr. B.
Certainly will do that. Thank you, Karen. Michael?
Thank you, David. I'd like to also extend my thanks to the veterans with the various different services that we went to. And they were all, all really well-done. And it always feels good when you can salute them and service them as they serviced us. Also, on that, as we all know, it's been challenging with the economy. It's been challenging with the shutdown. A lot of people have been hurting, and they're looking for food, and also financial help and things of that nature. With that being said, St. Dorothy's Youth Ministry is collecting shoes and coats, new, new items, of course, and they want to give it to foster kids, something that I know that Mendel holds dear to his heart with his wife. And if you want to donate to St. Dorothy's by the 30th of this month, they are accepting it. After that, they're going to start the distribution process. So it's a, so it's a worthy item for the youth ministry. Also, I'm not sure if everyone's aware of St. Vincent de Paul. They're located throughout the United States, and St. Dorothy's has a division there. They have a food bank, so if anyone's interested or needs any food, they can go there, and they don't turn anybody away. They also have a financial program that by application, you can apply for financial aid. You can apply for financial education. And they do an amazing job to help wherever they can. They have a big heart, and they look forward to servicing those who need the help. And they don't turn anyone away. They're just an amazing group. They've been around for a long time, and many folks are unaware of, of their services. This evening, we had a gentleman, Mr. Moore, talked about the homeless and the need for servicing. And I'm going to ask our city manager if he can opine a little bit on what the city does do. We spend a tremendous amount of funds helping the homeless, whether it's food, or shelter, or whichever it is, or counseling. So Adam, perhaps you can maybe give us a little bit of an update of roughly how much we spend, and, and what services we provide.
Sure. Appreciate, appreciate the opportunity. So the city, over the last three or four years, has invested more and more money into our homelessness services. We have outreach services. We attempt to find individuals, places if they would like shelter or, or help. We recently conducted our own point-in-time count, showed about 50% decrease where we were two years ago. We do that count every two years. And so we spend over $2 million a year between staffing and services and cleanup costs. So, and it's, and it's, these are programs the community continues to like and expect. We know homelessness is one of the top, uh, community concerns, and really has been so since 2020, 2021. So the city council has continued to allocate additional resources. So again, services, places to say, any other programs for those, those people that need mental health, drug, alcohol abuse, any, anything related to their, if you need a place or to contact family, or you need to travel somewhere, we're happy to assist. So we do a pretty tremendous job here in the outreach and know most individuals. In fact, when we did our most recent homelessness count, about 60, 65% of the individuals that were contacted and provided information accommodated that they had received offers of services from the city staff or our contractors. So we're definitely aware of the situation and heavily involved and happy to answer any specific questions that we may have.
And we have about eight beds through the KLA that we have available.
Yep, any one time, yes.
One time, and also hotel vouchers.
Yep.
Roughly, what's our annual spend?
On homelessness, over $2 million.
Thank you. Last item, everyone's probably seen some boxes around town for toys. There's a number of drop-off places for that, and they go to various causes. You have Hilltop Real Estate, Glendora Glass and Mirror, The Chamber. Also here at City Hall, I would imagine there's other places here as library. And they all support different foundations, McKinley's Children's Services, and the Glendora Community Service Foundation. And I think there's some other ones as well. I'm, I'm not sure which other ones there are. But we also have Stuff the Bus that's going to be coming up here shortly, a couple Saturdays in a row. So that should be pretty fun. Thank you, David.
Thank you, Michael. Last week was a busy week for me, including obviously some veterans' things earlier this week, but had a great event last week that I got to participate in as a guest, and I was quite honored. We are involved in a group called the Los Angeles Area Economic Development Council. And they, they are a large vision entity in Los Angeles County that looks at how cities participate and promote economic and community development within their cities. They have large city divisions and small city divisions. And they host a nomination period for communities for their annual Eddie Awards, Economic Development, you, okay, Eddie. And we actually were a finalist as a city in the small city category of under 66,000 people. We were one of five small cities that were honored to be in the finalist group. I got to join our Community Development Director Jeff Kugel, our Economic Development and Housing Director Tiffany Chu, our manager in that area, Chantelle Correa, and Mark Archibald, our senior planner. And they were humble enough to take me with them. And we went to a big event and got to be recognized. Unfortunately, the event, or the, the award in our category did go to another city, Montebello. But we did a wonderful thing, and it was great to be considered. Congratulations to that team on the work you're doing, and we, we may see it again. So thank you for that, and congratulations. With that, I have nothing else. I'll bring it back to Mr. Raymond.
Two updates for you this evening. First, Bill, if you wouldn't mind coming forward really quick, and then for the, for the team to bring Sam up on team. So, Bill, it's going to rain. People always have questions about sandbags. We don't know where they go.
Yes, but we go through a lot.
That's right. So would, would you mind sort of explaining the services and how we're here to help?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So we have been keeping a close eye on the weather. We know we have some rain coming. How much? We're not sure just yet. We have been attending the National Weather Service webinars to make sure we have the most up-to-date data. In anticipation of that, our facilities crews are out today doing inspections of all the roofs of the buildings, making sure the drains were clean, and doing some kind of repair work. Our street staff are out today as well, checking storm drains, delivering a couple pallets of sandbags to the parking lot across the street, in case anybody needs those. So for any residents that need sandbags, they are there and available. We ask that you take a maximum of 10 sandbags. If you need more than that, contact us and let us know. But we want to make sure we have enough for everybody that would have them. We will have crews on standby Friday and Saturday during the event. On Friday, if it's raining, we'll also have a couple of crews out on patrol, not only from our streets division, but also the water division, just to make sure we're keeping an eye on things. And again, we do have sandbags available. We will have teams ready. We also have a full standby list, so in case it happens to get really icy out there, we have a group of people that are ready to respond within about 30 minutes. So we will be prepared. We have additional sandbags over at the Public Works Yard as well. We do coordinate with LA County Fire Department. In case they run into an emergency, we make sure we have about 500 sandbags available for them. So it's a good team effort for that. So confident that we have all the right people in place, and we'll be ready for the rain.
Perfect. Thank you, Bill. All right, Sam, are you live?
I am. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can all hear you. Just, just really quick, for everyone in the audience, if you've been signing up for city alerts, you know over the past year, you've received several alerts that are non-emergency. Phones are down. And Sam's been working really hard trying to get some of our vendors to help us out. And Sam, would you mind providing everyone with a brief update on where we're at?
Sure. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I just want to take this opportunity. Thank you, Adam, for letting me hijack some of your time. I really wanted to go over some of the interruptions that we've been having to the city phone lines, understand how completely concerning and frustrating the disruptions have been, especially when they affect the ability to reach city departments or public safety services. Frontier has informed us that the primary cause of these outages have been multiple intentional fiber cuts, and that's the result of criminal theft and vandalism targeting the telecommunications office or infrastructure to steal the copper wire that's inside the cabling. They don't know, however, that there's no copper and fiber, fiber cabling, so they're basically cutting the lines just to cut the lines. These incidents, as you know, have severely damaged the fiber pathways and have resulted in service instability beyond the city's control. And while Frontier has been working really hard to make those repairs, the city has also been taking the steps to just, to not only reduce the impact of any future outages, we are currently implementing, or we have contacted Spectrum. Spectrum has been phenomenal. They've actually run some additional lines into the city, which have helped us build some backup and some redundancy into our phone system. So I'm hoping all of that is in place within the next two weeks. This will allow us to be more consistent in the service that we provide to our residents. And even when those external carriers are, are down, our phone systems should stay up. Myself, I would really like to thank you for your patience as we work through all these challenges that we've had. We're doing our best to get that redundancy built. And public safety is, and was, is really up the top of our minds, and we remain our, our top priority. If you guys have any questions about what's been going on with Frontier, please ask. I'm here to answer any questions.
With that, Mayor, my time is done. Any questions for Sam?
Any questions? No? Okay. Thank you, Sam.
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you.
Mr. Attorney?
Nothing for many things.
And I need to make a correction, please. I think I misidentified our marks going to the Eddie Awards the other night. It was Mark Carnahan, senior planner, not Mark Archibald, city planner. Okay. I'm sorry, Mark. Yes, okay. I hear three's a charm. That's what they say. Okay. Moving along, our next item is a special fun thing to get to do. It's a proclamation proclaiming November 10 through 14 as Law Enforcement Records and Support Personnel Appreciation Week. I would like to make this presentation. And before I do, I'm going to embarrass them and have them come up and stand at guard to receive this in a moment. But would record specialist Julie Vargas and Community Services Officer Christina Verduzco, please come up to the podium and be recognized. Welcome, ladies. It's my honor to share this proclamation to proclaim Law Enforcement Records and Support Personnel Day, whereas law enforcement agencies throughout the state depend upon law enforcement records and professional staff, personnel, to provide them with vital services. And whereas information is the lifeblood of any organization... And whereas information is the lifeblood of any organization, and accurate law enforcement records must be created, collected, processed, maintained, disseminated, and disposed of in accordance with local, state, and federal laws. And whereas citizens have an expectation that law enforcement records are maintained with accuracy and integrity, overseen by staff dedicated to continual professional development and the highest standards of operational efficiency. And whereas enforcement records and professional staff personnel are crucial to helping law enforcement agencies identify, pursue, capture, and process suspected law violators. And whereas these professionals continually use their expertise and experience to insist in serving the public, maintaining criminal statistics, and assisting patrol and investigators tracking felons to improve apprehension strategies. And is it, whereas it is important to recognize California's law enforcement records and professional staff personnel for their valuable contributions to our law enforcement systems. And whereas the City of Glendora Police Department records and professional staff personnel are responsible for the integrity of law enforcement records for prosecutors, allied agencies, and citizens, tracking missing and wanted persons, accounting for recovered stolen vehicles, firearms, and property, live scan and fingerprint services, call taking, creation and verification of statistical reports for the Department of Justice and Federal Bureau of Investigations, and a host of behind the scenes duties in support of the department and city goals. Now therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Glendora, do hereby proclaim the week of November eleventh through fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five, in the City of Glendora as Law Enforcement Records and Support Personnel Day in the City of Glendora, and do hereby recognize and support the Glendora Police Department's records and professional staff personnel for their invaluable service to the department and the city. In witness, I have signed this document and put a seal on it on this day, the twelfth of November, two thousand twenty-five. The next line one you can read. That's it.
You may do a picture.
Thank you.
And then you're welcome to make comments. You don't get up there.
Oh, yes, sir.
No, thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council, and thank you to the city for all your support. We truly appreciate it, and have a good night.
It's our pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving along, we have a presentation on an update of Senate, California Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three with a three-stream commercial program and presentation tonight by Athens Services. And presenting as Vice President of Government Affairs, Jonathan Hughes. Welcome, Jonathan. Always a pleasure to have Athens Services in Glendora.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, City Council, and congratulations on your Eddie Award nomination. I know one of our colleagues was there last week. She said she had a good time seeing you and some of our other city partners, so that's great. Good evening, like I said, Jonathan Hughes, Vice President of Government Affairs with Athens Services, here for a brief update on some important Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three changes and ways that we can continue to work together to ensure the city maintains its compliance with this state mandate. As a reminder, this is a steady session to provide education to the council and the community on this matter, so no council action will be taken today, and we are welcoming any feedback that you might have, and we'll be happy to bring that back to our executive team. Next slide, please. Thank you so much. So in August of two thousand twenty-two, this body, the Glendora City Council, adopted an amendment to ensure that Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three, the city retained its compliance, moving the residential collection program to three streams. Under that amendment, Athens Services would provide support in a number of areas to ensure the city's compliance. And as you may be aware, SB thirteen eighty-three, as it's affectionately called, those program elements include a number of things, including the collection program, which is your, the barrels and bins that everyone's most, most familiar with, contamination monitoring, waste assessments, outreach and education, procurement, data and reporting, and food recovery support. For the collection program, the law requires all cities to follow strict container coloring and labeling guidelines. Because of this, the city had to update its residential collection program. Before, customers used their own barrels, and trash was collected manually by hand. Now, the city uses an automated and standardized collection system with uniform, color-coded, and labeled containers. When SB thirteen eighty-three first started, commercial collection stayed on a two-stream system. Now, as the law continues to phase in, in order for the city to maintain compliance, we are required to move the commercial program to a three-stream system. Athens and city staff are already working on an amendment and updated ordinance to ensure the city maintains its compliance, and we wanted to ensure the council is aware as we move forward with these negotiations. Next slide, please. Thank you. In January of this year, CalRecycle implemented their SB thirteen eighty-three regulation that mandates municipalities and haulers recover seventy-five percent of organic waste from trash. This will help reduce greenhouse gas emissions in the state of California. To meet this regulation, CalRecycle is encouraging cities to implement a three-stream program. And as I mentioned, the city's residential program already has this three-stream waste system, and now we're proposing to transition and implement this program for our commercial and multifamily customers. Under the new program, these customers who are subscribed to trash service will also receive, as you can see on the slide here, a ninety-six gallon recycle or blue container, as well as a sixty-four gallon organics or green container as part of a bundled service. According to our findings, providing commercial customers with this ninety-six gallon blue container is the most cost efficient way for the city to comply with the state's mandate. On the next slide, we'll show a comparison of the current versus proposed service and some examples of what we're currently working on. As a reminder, none of this is finalized, and of course, the contract amendment will come back to council for approval at a future meeting. Thank you. As you may know, we're currently operating under a pay-as-you-throw system. And as we move to a bundled program, we're phasing in the charge for organic service over a five-year period. As of right now, this organic service is included at no additional cost, so as we implement the new bundled system, we'll be phasing in this rate to mitigate impacts to customers. We're phasing in that rate over five years. So in the first year of the program, customers will see an eighty percent discount on their bill, the second year a sixty percent discount, and so on, until five years it reaches its full implementation. And as you'll see, we're essentially going to be retooling the rate sheet to better reflect this bundle, introduce customers to, and actually incentivize customers to source separate, meaning separate at the source of the waste, and actually be able to keep their bills lower, as you'll see on the next slides here. Recycling will now be included, actually, just a second before you go to the next one, thank you. Recycling will now be included in the commercial rates. You can see here a bundled service that includes a twenty-seven dollar and fifty-six cent recycling charge, which covers the cost of providing recycling services for all of our commercial customers. And just like organic service, customers can request a number of modifications. They can get additional recycling containers for a small added cost. They can get different size containers, and they can even change their pickup frequencies. Customers will be able to select a bundle that meets their needs, and if we need any additional routes in the future in the city, these changes to the contract will allow to allow for scaling without any further rate impacts. Again, the program is designed to encourage recycling, and as you'll see here, the recycling rate is significantly less than the trash rate. So as we move to the next slide, we have some examples to show how customers can actually right-size their service to mitigate any of these price impacts. And I'll, I'll mention this again later, but I think it's important to note that before any of this were to happen, we'll visit every single commercial customer here in Glendora, and we'll give people direct feedback on their waste generation, making recommendations based on what they see. On these examples, I just want to point out, you can do any size container you want, but what we use in these examples is what we call a one-three-one. That's one three-yard trash container picked up one time a week. That's just the most common container size and, and frequency. So essentially, we have two types of customers. We have our standard service customers who receive trash, recycling, and organics collection. And then we have our organics waivers customers who've received approval both from the city and from Athens to opt out of organic service. If customers have that organics waiver today, they can keep their waiver, but they will still pay the new bundled rate to contribute toward the shared cost of SB thirteen eighty-three compliance elements. As a reminder, that SB thirteen eighty-three includes many elements I mentioned, only one of which is having all three of the containers. And instead of an organics container, these waiver customers can receive an extra ninety-six gallon recycling cart at no additional charge, and I'll explain additional options in a moment. Again, this approach ensures that the cost of providing the recycling service is shared across the city, and that all customers contribute to the city's compliance with SB thirteen eighty-three. The ongoing costs of any new trucks, employees, and this three-stream system are covered. And as you can see here, looking at the slide, the current rates are in the first column, and in the next column, we have options that customers can use to right-size their service. So every customer, as you can see here, will, will now receive additional capacity in the form of that ninety-six gallon blue container. And if customers shift more of their waste from their trash into those recycling containers, they can actually reduce their trash service and reduce their monthly bill. For example, our standard service customers, as you can see, if they currently have a three-yard trash bin and that organic service once a week, their current bill is three hundred sixty-eight dollars and eighty-two cents. That's a monthly bill. Under the new bundle program, that same bill would be four hundred nineteen dollars and forty-four cents. However, if that same customer can downsize their trash service because they're putting more recyclables in the correct recycling container, they can actually save money versus today's rates while contributing to a more sustainable future, even with that extra recycling cart. For organics customers, you can see here at the bottom, same thing. If they have that three-yard trash bin once a week, their bill is three hundred sixty-eight dollars and eighty-two cents. And under the new program, they would pay the bundled rate of four hundred nineteen dollars and forty-four cents. This accounts for the new recycling program and the phased-in organics price. However, if that same customer right sizes their trash container by placing more in the recycling containers, they can actually save money for the rate that you would see here on the screen, three hundred and thirty-one dollars and sixty-three cents compared to today's rate. As I mentioned, that same organics waiver customer can even opt for an extra recycling cart at no additional cost to replace the waived organics cart. I have an additional example on the next slide, but I'm going to ask that you skip that one for the sake of time, and we can come back to it if the council likes. So like I mentioned, before we do any of this, we will be communicating extensively with customers. We will meet directly with each commercial and multifamily customer to ensure that they, they understand the new bundle program, answer any questions they have, and walk through various service options. Additionally, our customer service department will be available for any one-on-one support, explaining rates to customers, and helping them adjust their service needs. Next slide, please. As part of these proposed changes, at the city's request, we are looking at expanding porter service in the downtown area to provide more support in keeping the area clean and serviced. We're also planning to adjust contamination fees. Right now, contamination fees, which is when you put the wrong material in the wrong container, can cost a commercial multifamily customer anywhere between, between forty-four and over five hundred and thirty dollars per occurrence. Under the new proposal, this fee will be reduced to a reasonable fifty to sixty dollars to make it more fair and more consistent. And lastly, all city buildings and city-sponsored events will transition to this three-stream system, trash, recycling, and organics, to set the standard for the community. Next slide, please. Again, staff is currently working with Athens Services, and I should make a note that the rates that you saw on that, on those previous slides, the current rates are of course accurate, the future rates are proposed. None of this is finalized yet, but those are sort of for illustrative purposes to give you a sense of where we're, where we're going. We have a draft outreach plan, and we'll be working on this contract amendment and municipal code update with staff. And with that, we'll go to the last slide, and I'm happy to take any questions or comments from council. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Jonathan. Always encouraging and nice to see the opportunities that Athens is bringing toward us and miles ahead of our competition, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Do we have any questions or comments on staff? No? Mr. Michael?
Just really, really quick, do you have any data that you can share with, you know, I guess the trash cops having to go around looking into the bins and stuff? How's that been working? Have people been complying and putting trash in the right receptacles?
I, I think for the most part, those are, those are route monitors, and there's a picture of them on that, with that second slide, I think, of somebody kind of peering into the bin. You'll see Athens.
Compliance data.
Yeah, they, there are route auditors, we call them. But essentially, yeah, they go around and they'll do inspections of, of residential as well, but mostly multifamily and commercial customers. I think overall, compliance has been pretty good, and, and I will say, with those compliance fees that I talked about adjusting near the end, we've been very, very lenient. We don't typically assess a lot of those, but we have the option to. So, so the goal with moving toward this is if there are those occurrences after maybe two or three warnings, then we might be able to assess those fees. But I think overall, customers in Glendora have done a really good job of that, and hopefully transitioning to this. I mean, think about it at our houses, at least for me, you know, a lot of Amazon boxes, a lot of cardboard, a lot of stuff that actually should go in that recycling container. So we're hopeful that by incentivizing that behavior, we'll be able to keep more stuff out of the landfill and, and really encourage folks to put things in the, in the right place.
So a question I guess I have for staff is on the commercial side. We have the enclosures that they have to put the trash in, so if they start adding more containers, they might not be able to fit. How, how do we address that?
It's definitely something we're going to work through, and which is why the help of Athens is so important, walking out and monitoring, because the, the size of the bin could be smaller, there could be multiple bins, so sort of, you know, every situation may be a little bit unique. There may be a waiver on one set of bins in lieu of another, so, but Athens has shared with us that they're committed to meeting with every customer that would like to meet and walking through all their options.
Last question is, there's an option to opt out?
Correct. There's, there's an, are you referring to the organics waiver program?
Yes.
Yes, and currently, there's somewhere between two and three hundred commercial multifamily customers in Glendora that have that organics waiver, and that's a process that both the city and Athens review before granting that waiver, and space constraints can be one of those options in addition to maybe not generating any organics.
And that's allowed in thirteen eighty-three?
Correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Shawna?
Can you elaborate on that, the waiver, a, a little bit? You said there's people using that. It's strictly for space constraints? And why only that and not recycling? Because that's another bin. I feel like that's going to be the biggest thing for these customers. A lot of those, there, those bins are in the areas that are specifically sized for those, and so I feel like we're probably going to get a lot of pushback for space constraints.
Yeah, and I think the goal or the hope there would be that, again, if a, if a customer can downsize their current trash service, that container will now be taking up less volume, and they can put hopefully that recycling cart there in, in taking that space that was taken up by the three-yard bin, for instance.
Well, with the one and a half, it's the same footprint.
It is the same length, yes.
So, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's definitely an issue, and just to answer your question, yeah. So under the organics waiver program, I don't believe that that exists for recycling, but the organics waiver, there are two ways to qualify. One is if you don't generate enough organics waste, or two is if you don't, if you have bona fide space constraints that have to be verified, of course, by city staff and by Athens. But yeah, like Adam said, we, we will definitely work with each customer, and that's part of the goal. Before we roll any of this out, our, our route folks will go out and talk with every single customer, to talk about things like space constraints, to talk about how much organic material they're generating, all that stuff.
Are there any cities that have already rolled this out that they, there's some like ideas on what they did?
I, I can, I can share one anecdote from, from another city that we're actually working with on sort of a model design, let's say, for any new developments that would happen in that city. So a, you know, a new housing development or new commercial development that comes into town, you know, working on their space, like getting ahead of the space constraints, I guess is what I'm trying to say. So building an enclosure that would be the appropriate size based on this three container system. So we've actually done that with one of our cities, and they're pretty happy about that, because now some, if a new applicant comes, they say, hey, in order for your trash to be compliant, this is what we need you to do in terms of the enclosure.
Great, if you have, you know, just moving forward, if there's some, you know, fantastic resolution to, to the space issue, you know how to get ahold of me, connect with me, let me know, because I feel like that's going to be the, the, the pushback that we hear, probably on this end.
Absolutely.
I think it's great, you know, the more we can do to, you know, promote the separation and, you know, recycling and whatnot is, is good, so appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
And I noticed your last slide was your new facility, and I've been there, and it's fantastic.
Yes, thank you. And I know a couple of you have had the opportunity to, to tour our, our brand new material recovery facility, which is just over here in Irwindale. So if you haven't yet, invite you to come out and appreciate, appreciate everything.
Thank you. Did you wish to share?
And this is Brandon Mills, who's our Division Vice President. And this is Brandon Mills, who's our division vice president from our Irwindale hauling yard just down the road.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. And we do have a, we do have a solution for that specific scenario. We recognize that throughout all the cities here in the foothills, there's some space constraints in specific areas. So we have explored what's called a split bin. So essentially, you take the same footprint of a three-yard bin, which is our most common size, and then you have a one and a half yard and a one and a half yard, two separate compartments. So then you can have one for your recycling, one for your trash. And then that minimizes the impact in those specific areas. Obviously, as we work through the details of it, we would need to kind of put some geocoding parameters on it specifically for the areas that need it, but that's something we can work through as we do the negotiation.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Who would know, trash could be so fun. Next item, we'd like to welcome and introduce our Small Business Saturday program. And presenting today is management aide Chantel Korea, joined by Chamber of Commerce President and Chief Executive Officer Joe Cena. Welcome, Chantel.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you again for giving me this opportunity to share some updates of our small business initiatives and Small Business Saturday that's coming up on November 29th. Under the Economic Action Plan and Strategic Plan, the city has implemented several initiatives to support small businesses. These are our Open Rewards app, which is to encourage the Glendora community to shop local. We have a partnership with the Small Business Development Center, which offers ongoing resources. We have a monthly newsletter to keep Glendora businesses informed, and we have in-person workshops and events to foster networking and collaboration. Our partnership with the Small Business Development Center has been an excellent resource for our Glendora business community. Through this collaboration, we provide expert-led workshops designed to address specific needs for our local businesses. The Small Business Development Center also offers free one-on-one consulting to our Glendora business owners and entrepreneurs. To date, the Small Business Development Center has provided 70 hours of counseling to 24 businesses. Common topics include forming LLCs, preparing tax returns, and securing business loans. And our next virtual workshop hosted by the Small Business Development Center will be on Google Business Profiles and Local Search Engine Optimization on November 20th. Virtual between 2 and 3, so if anyone can't show up, they will send you the replay by email. So register and sign up. In September, the Economic Development Division partnered up with the Glendora Chamber of Commerce. And just from your fact, Karen, I always want to say thank you to our Chamber of Commerce. They are a great partnership. And so we led a Women Who Lead Community and Commerce Expo. And quick highlights, we had over 90 attendance. We had six Glendora business owners as speakers and one keynote speaker, each sharing practical strategies. We had the Small Business Development Center and the Small Business Administration there. On-site resources and guidance for our business owners. We had local women-owned, local women-owned business participated in vendor fair, and the feedback was absolutely incredible. Participants called it motivating, actionable, and inspiring. And staff plans to continue to partner up with the Chamber for future events. The Glendora Business Newsletter was launched in April 2025 as a monthly email to more than 3,000 local businesses. On this slide, you can see a sample of what the business newsletter looks like and some of our few recent topics. Each newsletter highlights information helping business owners to discover new tools, stay informed of our programs, and learn practical ways to strengthen their operation. The Open Rewards program continues to support Shop Local campaign. Since launched in April of 2025, the program has distributed over 5,000 rewards, engaged 541 users, and supported 274 businesses, generating over 115,000 total economic impact across retailers, restaurants, and grocery stores. To encourage the community, we have put up the Blue Open Rewards as display in local businesses' storefronts. And also, we're introducing a new promotional fire that will be shared in the upcoming And headed into the holiday season, we're going to use the same momentum for Small Business Saturday, partnering up with the Chamber of Commerce to encourage residents to shop local, earn rewards, and celebrate our small businesses. During the Small Business Saturday, we'll feature a 10% rewards promotion through the Open Rewards app exclusively for small business retailer and restaurants only. And with me is Joe Cena, the president and CEO of the Chamber of Commerce, to share more about his efforts of the Small Business Saturday.
Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, for allowing me to speak tonight. In conjunction with all the wonderful things Chantel mentioned, you know, the chambers, first off, we're proud to work with the Economic Development Committee, the city council, because we're all here for the same reasons, to make sure Glendora prospers and that sales tax production continues so we can pay for stuff. So, but in conjunction with the Open Rewards on Small Business Saturday and through, for a month, from November 15 through December 16, the chamber is reintroducing our Shop Local contest. So when you can, you know, use the Open Rewards to earn cash back, you can also have a chance to win some prizes. So, and there's no limit to that part. You can, you know, keep shopping and turn in your rewards. So, and for every $50 one spends, they get an entry in for the prizes that we're going to collect. And then if you shop a chamber member, you get two entries, since we are a Chamber of Commerce, we kind of lean that way. But you can shop anything, and it's not just, you know, retail and restaurants, it's any kind of shop. Go buy a car, you can go buy a house if you want, you know, if there's anything for sale. So, but, but, but again, we're here. And on Small Business Saturday in the village, we will be having a little booth like we did last year, you know, collecting some receipts there and promoting the local village businesses also. So look out for that. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Chantel unless you have any questions. Thank you very much.
I'm finished, too. Thank you so much. Just want to say, if anyone has not downloaded our Open Rewards app, please download it. You'll save 5% on any local Glendora restaurants, retailers, and grocery stores. So if you like to save money and get money back, download the app. Thank you.
And Mr. Thompson has it on his phone. He was just showing me.
Yes.
I was just going to say, for those of you who know me, know that I am the least technical guy that's in this room. And I was with Chantel the other day at the chamber meeting, and she did help me load the app. So I have the icon right here. And don't tell my, you know, wife, because she'll want to go out and shop more. But I'm going to take her out to eat probably Thursday night, and we're going to use this. So it's going to be good. So thank you. It works.
Okay. Thank you, Chantel. And Joe, very much encouraged. Any other questions, comments? No? Okay.
What is the app name besides Shop Glendora?
Open Rewards. Open Rewards.
Open Rewards?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a quick question. The 5% is that every time?
That's every time. So anytime you upload your receipt, or if you have your credit card attached, and you shop at a local business, that's a restaurant, retailer, grocery store, you will earn the 5%, but it's capped at $10.
Per?
Per transaction. So we've had reports where people are getting back 300 and cashing it out to use it to another local business, so it's, it's worth it, especially during this holiday season.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Brings us to our 2025 to 2027 strategic planning update for November 2025. And presenting is City Manager Adam Raymond.
Good evening, everyone. We'll make this a quick update this evening. Included in your packet is a listing of every single action item the city will be undertaking and the status of that with a detailed update. So just a quick reminder, the city council approved our strategic plan in March of 2025. It covers the period of 7/125 through 6/30/27, which also coincides with our two-year spending plan. The plan is broken down into specific areas. There are goals, which are broad overarching focus areas. Each goal is broken out into a series of outcomes, which are specific, achievable, relevant and time-bound. And these are what we aim to achieve in this two-year period. Under each outcome are actions, which are specific projects or programs. And then with each of those actions are indicators. Those indicators are specific items, and we'll go over some of those specific indicators here this evening. So quickly, our first, our goal is suburban living. And some of the highlights included our approval of the safety element, the station area vision plan, our San Jose woodland approval of entitlements, adoption of our Economic Development Action Plan, and assessment of city homeless services. We would like people to visit our great city, and so included in this overarching goal, we've hired an economic development manager. We've had joint efforts with the chamber, just so happens they were here this evening. We've done a communications audit, and we've completed public polling of possible South Hills activity and building, and that was part of the 2025 community survey. For new and revitalized city facilities, we've provided information on a possible revamped civic center, including selecting a vendor to do the visioning process, and we've completed space planning. We've also updated our needs assessment for city facilities, which highlighted about $50 million in ongoing needs for status quo. We've also completed a community outreach for our upcoming urban forestry manual. On sustainable infrastructure, we've completed our agreement with the COG to administer the People Movement Project, which, as all of you know, are both urban trail and first-last-mile projects. We've completed our traffic and speed study. We have updated six intersections with updated traffic signal equipment. And we are almost done with the Glendora Avenue water tank, Glendora Avenue and Lone Hill design projects, and several other water projects, which over the next 12 to 18 months will add an additional 1 million square feet of new paving. Lastly, staff and technology, we've completed our draft of our new personnel policies and procedures, some of which date back to the 1980s. We've updated MOUs with both public safety groups and one professional group. We've completed operational survey assessments for Recreation Human Services and the library departments. And we are nearing the end of completion of our enterprise permitting, licensing, code enforcement, utility building, and enterprise resource management systems. So talked about total indicators, there's 102 through 11/125. We've completed about 25%. Little over 60% are in process, and we have yet to start about 14%. So as you know, we'll be here periodically, most likely quarterly, but when we do have our mid-year budget updates and other items, we'll update as well. So details are in your agenda packet, but wanted to provide a quick survey and remind everyone that our strategic plan's on the website. Thank you, Mayor.
Great. Thank you, Adam. Any questions or comments? Discussion? Seeing none?
Mr. Mayor?
Oh. Yes, please. Sorry.
I just want to say, I really like how this is laid out. It's so, I carry this year, this most current one and the last one in my binder here, and it's just so much easier to read, the way it's color-coded.
Yeah, I agree.
And it's just so great. And I encourage the community to go to the website and read this. There is sometimes confusion in the community about why we do the things we do or why staff is doing the things that they're doing. It's because they're following what council dictates in this strategic plan. So it's a super easy to read, but one of the most important documents, I think, that exists. So good read. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions? Nope? All right. That brings us to our first of two public hearings. A public hearing to adopt a master schedule of fees for services and user fee cost recoveries. And presenting tonight, first of all, I'd like to declare the public hearing open and invite Deputy City Manager Marie Ritchie to make the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor.
I guess she's related to that soccer star that was here earlier tonight.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Marie Ritchie, and I'm the Deputy City Manager, presenting the proposed master schedule of fees for service for your consideration tonight. The purpose of tonight's public hearing is to formalize and adopt the user fee cost recovery policy following the completion of a comprehensive fee study. The study provides the justification necessary to recover costs legally, transparently, and fairly. While the last comprehensive study was completed in 2003, the city annually reviews fees and makes adjustments when possible during the budget adoption process to align with revenue projections. In April of 2025, the city engaged Matrix Consulting Group to conduct a fee study for the city, and in September of 2025, we presented the preliminary findings to the city council prior to tonight's recommendation for adoption. Included with the proposed fee schedule is a user fee cost recovery policy that establishes a consistent framework for setting and maintaining user fees and also requires regular review and updates, including comprehensive studies every three to five years, so we're not waiting 20 years again to do this. This is important because maintaining and sustaining a long-term revenue source for the city ensures ongoing services and programs for our community and maintains a high bond rating for the city when there's a need for financing. As a recap, in September, staff presented the findings of the comprehensive fee study, which showed current recovery rates of fees based services at a rate of 67%. That means the city was subsidizing 33% or is subsidizing 33% of user fees, which typically only benefits the users themselves who are asking for these services. Low-cost recovery areas are mainly in recreation, library, and PD, police. This is normal because these services focus on community service and benefits. For example, you saw my three rowdy Ritchis sitting in the crowd today. I enroll them in city programs because I truly believe as long as they're busy, they are not a menace to society, out-causing problems, vandalizing, and you see that quite often. So having affordable and accessible programs to our youth out there is very important. It creates and instills values to our youth at a young age, and it really enhances public safety overall. This slide provides for the overall look at proposed fees, and the increase of the recovery rate will go from 67% to 82%. The areas that we seek to recover 100% are focused on planning, where applicants receive direct benefit for the service they pay for. And the projected revenue increase annually is approximately $600,000. The maximum revenue the city can recover is $1.3 million annually. So we're still leaving about, or not leaving, but subsidizing about $700,000 a year in programs and services. Lastly, the proposed fees before you tonight, if approved, would take effect January 1st, 2026. We advertise these proposed fees for the last 14 days in the San Gabriel Valley Examiner on October 27 and November 4 for a total of 10 days, as required by law. We also sent it directly to organizations and businesses who have directly requested that the city send them any changes in fees when we are getting ready to adopt new fees. This concludes the presentation. Myself and we have Koushbu from Matrix available online as well.
Thank you, Marie. Very nice. At this point, I will open for public testimony and invite members of the public to speak. Speakers who- Speakers will be limited to three minutes, speaking only on this agenda item. If you are in attendance, please fill out a speaker card and submit to the recording admin before the end of the public comment period. When invited, please come to the podium, state your business, and thank you very much. And again, limited to three minutes. So with that, do we have anyone wishing to speak on this item?
We do not, Mayor.
We do not. Okay, then as such, I will close the public hearing and bring it back for discussion on the council and invite Mr. Thompson.
Mayor, thank you. Marie, thank you. As you know, Shawna and I, during the normal course of our weekly updates, we met with you today, and you answered all of the questions that I had. I think it's really important that the public knows that it's been a number of years since we had a study done like we've had. And I think that's really important because every dollar that we spent comes from all of us. And we need to be excellent folks to steward that. I think we are. And the people that use all of the services that our city has should get a fair price. And I think that this is giving that to them. We need to steward the money that we have well, and getting back 80, 82% of our cost is excellent. And I think that speaks well of what your team does and what the council is attempting to do. So, good job. And I think this is going to be really, really good for all of us, especially as we don't know what the next year holds with inflation, with rates, with whatever. And this will stabilize things, and I think it's really, really good. So thank you.
Thank you, Mendel. Karen?
Thank you, Marie. As you mentioned, it's been 22 years since we did a comprehensive study. We have adjusted some rates over that time, but it's been more piecemeal, so this is great. It's comprehensive. And the places in which you adjusted it still makes it palatable and acceptable to the residents because of where the biggest increases are. So, thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Shawna?
Thank you for the report, and I echo what my colleague said, and we spent quite a bit of time this morning, actually, discussing this, so I have no further questions, but appreciate it.
Thank you. Michael?
Thank you, David. Thank you, Marie, for all the hard work and the team that did this, because I know it took a long time to put all together and do the investigations and the time studies and things of that nature, so I greatly appreciate that. And you answered all the questions that David and I had on Monday when we went through on this, and so it's quite important. I mean, the overall scheme of things, $600,000 might not be a lot, but we have to be good stewards, as Mendel said, of our taxpayer funds. So thank you for everything that you did, and I really appreciate this going forward, because I know this is a top of discussion when I first got on council, and we had these discussions ongoing, and we piecemealed it and things of that nature. And now that we have this full study, we have a good foundation and basis to move forward, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael. And I too thank the staff and yourself for a great program, and increasing the recovery rate is very important, so that's good. With that, any other discussion? If none, I'll accept a motion to accept.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Alawos, seconded by Mr. Thompson. I'll ask you to vote once the ballot gets up in front. And the motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much. Okay, our second public hearing item is a hearing to conduct the second reading and adoption of ordinance number 2097, adopting the 2025 California Building Standards Codes. And with that, I'd like to invite building official David Collette to present. Welcome, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. So this agenda item is for the second reading and adoption of the ordinance adopting the 2025 California Building Standards Codes. Every three years, the California Building Standards Commission adopts and publishes a new edition of the codes that govern the design and construction of buildings, associated facilities, and equipment throughout the state. Local jurisdictions such as Glendora are required by state law to enforce these codes, and the new building codes become effective January 1st of 2026. Some of the updates, the 2025 updates advance statewide goals for energy efficiency, electrification, and wildfire resilience. Updates include stronger electric-ready requirements in the energy code. They got new electrical vehicle charging and automatic load management systems, system provisions in the California Green Code, improved coordination of photovoltaic and battery energy storage standards, and probably most significantly is the introduction of a new standalone wildland urban interface code that consolidates the wildfire resilience requirements and access standards. Some of the, one of the new laws that the state passed restricts, temporarily restricts local jurisdictions from adopting or enforcing building standards for residential occupancies that are more restrictive than those contained in the California Building Standards Codes between October 1st, 2025, and June 1st, 2031, except where necessary to address an imminent threat to health or safety or is otherwise permitted by state law. This ordinance adopts the 2025 California Building Standards Codes, consistent with those requirements. We are adding nothing in addition to what's the state mandates here in Glendora. And so finally, the recommendation is that the city council, I realize I need new glasses after looking at the monitor this far away, that the city council adopt on second reading an ordinance entitled "An Ordinance of the City of Glendora, California, Adopting the 2025 Editions of the California Administrative Code, California Fire Code, California Building Code, California Existing Building Code, California Historical Building Code, California Mechanical Code, California Plumbing Code, California Wildland Urban Interface Code, California Electrical Code, California Residential Code, California Green Building Standards Code, California Reference Standards Code, and California Energy Code, including selected appendices thereto, by reading of the title only and awaiting further reading, and number two, direct the preparation of a summary of ordinance for publication pursuant to Government Code 36933 and Resolution CC 2018-40." And that concludes my presentation.
Easy for you to say. Thank you very much, Mr. Collette.
You're welcome.
Great. Well, with that, I will open public testimony and invite members of the public to speak. Speakers are limited to three minutes, speaking on this item only. If in attendance, kindly fill out the yellow speaker card, submit it to the recording admin before end of public testimony period. Once recognized, speakers will be invited to come to the podium, speak their case, and they have three minutes to do so. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone wishing to speak on this item?
We do not, Mayor.
We do not. Then I shall close public comment period and public testimony and close the public hearing. Bring it back for discussion and questions. And seeing a hand raised, I'd like to invite Shawna to be first.
I don't have any questions on this. Thank you for your report, by the way. But Adam, can you just clarify for the community, because we have two items on the consent calendar that are second readings as well? I just want to make sure everyone understands why this one is separate.
Dave had to come up tonight because California law requires that certain things are approved by public hearing even for a second reading. This is one of them. So because of what it means to the development community, they go the extra mile and require this to be a public hearing. We have other items on consent this evening that are also a second reading, and those are allowed to go on consent. So appreciate you coming back out tonight and doing that for all of us, but that is why sometimes at a federal level or a state level, they require certain public hearings, sometimes three or four, depending on the type of item.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you, Shawna. Karen?
Nothing, sir. I'm ready to make a motion to go ahead.
Okay. Mr. Thompson?
David, thank you. I'm glad it's every three years, and I was happy to hear you say and waiving further reading. That was music to my ears, so thank you. I support this.
Michael?
I move recommendations one and two.
As you, we have a motion, but I will, would you like to second that?
Sure.
Okay. I have no questions and comments. I'll invite us to vote upon the ballot. There it is. And motion carries 5-0. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to our consent calendar, items nine through 15. Items on the consent calendar may be enacted by one motion without individual discussion or unless a council member has requested it be removed for separate discussion. Does anyone wish to move for comment or discussion any of the items nine through 15?
Mayor, I would like to ask a question on item 15, so we can pass everything, but I'll just want to have a question answered.
I think that's fine, please. We'll entertain your question.
All right. This is for Adam. Item 15, it was brought up during public comment about the purchasing of vehicles, particularly the police vehicles. I know there's only a small window that we have every year to be able to purchase, and every year we're not even able to purchase.
That's correct.
So if you can maybe expand on that?
Yeah, so we have a limited period each and every year, depending on the manufacturer, to order vehicles. So we put in the article, put in the order, and when we know they're going to become available, we come to council to ask for approval. So during COVID, we had years where Ford and Dodge did not make their police vehicles for a year and sometimes 18 months. So within a longer period of time, we also had a vehicle that was run into, and so we're offering to replace that vehicle as well. So we do this periodically. These vehicles won't be here for many months, then they have to be outfitted, so we do it this far in advance to ensure that the police department will continue to have vehicles in great working order.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm ready to move consent items nine through 15.
Okay, I'd like to add a comment to the item 15 along with that. I'll accept your motion. Thank you. I think the fact that the vehicles look as good as they do is deceptive of their actual age, because if you look in at the odometer and the hour meters, those numbers are quite high. And reliability in fleets is you need to turn them at a certain point in time, or they will become less reliable. Therefore, the frequency of turn is more than a personal vehicle might be.
Appreciate that, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Have a motion to accept items nine through 15. Do I have a second, please?
Second.
Second by Mr. Thompson. Please make your votes. Items nine through 15 passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Brings us to member items. Item 16, 2025 election for the San Gabriel Basin Water Quality Authority, or WQA, board member representing cities with prescriptive pumping rights for the term of 2026 through 2030. With that, I'd like to ask Mr. Raymond to report out what we're doing here.
All right, so periodically for this board, we get an offer to vote on it. Currently, the Azusa mayor is our representative, and so we have found that service to be great for us. So the offer this evening is for the council to opine on a resolution, either nominating the mayor of Azusa or a council member from the city of Alhambra to that position. So currently, I believe it is the mayor of Azusa, and staff has been happy with the performance so far.
Very good. Thank you. With that, I'll bring it back for any discussion or questions. Do we have any? Seeing none, I will accept a motion to accept a recommendation.
So moved.
All right. Motion by Mr. Alawos, seconded by Mr. Thompson, and invite the vote, please. Motion passes 5-0 to vote for Mr. Gonzalez. Thank you very much. Onto new business. Item 17, award a public works contract to Select Electric, Inc., for Traffic Signal Modifications Plan Number 1388 in the amount of $2,087,197. And invite civil engineering assistant?
Abel Pagio, sir.
Pagio?
Pagio.
Pagio, okay. Welcome. Spend our money. Oh.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, City Council members. Again, my name is Abel Pagio, and I'm here to present the award for the HCP11 Traffic Signal Modification. Some of the scope of works included with this project are the installation of protected left-turn pacing on signal intersection, convert traffic signals from pedestal-mounted to mass arms on two intersections, installation of high-visibility crosswalks, upgrading of lighting, curb ramps, pedestrian push-button, wiring, controller, and cabinets. Our next slide shows the location of the projects, and these are Route 66 at Baranca, Route 66 at Hunter's Trail, Lone Hill at Kenoma, Gladstone at Valley Center, Wanita at Sunflower, Gladstone at Sunflower, and Gladstone at Baranca, and of course, Baseline at Grand Avenue. The bid opening was held as September 18, 2025. There were six responsive bids that we received. The engineers estimate is $2,190,075, and the bids range from $2,087,197 to $2,580,236. And for being the lowest bidder, staff recommends the award to Select Electric, IMC of Anaheim, California. Our next slide here shows bid summary, showing Select Electric as the lowest bidder, followed by Ferreira Construction and Elekner at Third. For our project timeline, the award of contract, hopefully it will be tonight, November 12, and the notice to proceed tentatively will be on December 8, 2025. Our construction duration is 270 calendar days. Construction starts January 5, 2026, and completion will be September 30, 2026, and that's depending on the weather. This project was budgeted in fiscal year 2325, adopted budget for the amount of $2,750,000, and expenditures that we have now for publication is 561. Design cost for professional services with a contingency of 10% is $267,283. Environmental is 75. This construction cost is $2,087,197. Contingency of 10%, that would be $208,719. For the construction inspection, which will be awarded, it's going to be $140,000. And for the geotechnical testing, it will be $45,000, for the total of $2,748,835. for the geotechnical testing, it will be $45,000, for the total of $2,748,835. The staff would like to recommend that the city council adopt a categorical exemption from California Environmental Act pursuant to Title 14, Section 15301(c) of California Code of Regulations. Approve the plans and specification for the HCP funded Cycle 11 Traffic Signal Modifications. Award contract to Select Electric for the HCP funded Cycle 11 Traffic Signal Modification Plan Number 1388 in the amount of $2,087,197. Authorize the Public Works Director to execute any necessary change orders in an amount not to exceed 10% of the original contract amount, and authorize the city manager or his designate to execute the contract, including minimal and/or non-substantive charges with the approval of the city attorney. That concludes my presentation, and with that, staff are now ready for your questions, sir.
Thank you, Abel. Very nice. With that, I'll bring it back for discussions and invite Karen.
No questions. Thank you.
Mr. Thompson?
Thank you. Excellent work. And if you could, there's a lot of folks, as Bill knows, frustrated by, you know, lights. So this is a specific job, but we've recently hired another firm to take over all of our lights. Adam, could you just brief quickly on that, because I know that the county was doing it, and then, or, you know, Bill can do it.
They were charging for it.
Yeah, well.
We're going to give Abel a breather here, and Bill's going to come talk about Unix and the work that they've done in the city.
You know, county was doing it, and we don't need to talk about that, but then we changed to another firm, and they're the ones doing all of our lights, but this is a special assignment. And you did a great job in, you know, sharing that. But Bill, could you just, for the six people that watch us, you know, let them know that we do have a great crew that's on the ground. In fact, I just heard that they fixed the Pasadena Route 66 issue.
Yes, sir.
And so just give us a quick update on that new group.
Yeah, absolutely. A couple of months ago, you approved a contract with Unix Industries. They have taken over our traffic signal maintenance. In that two months, they've been to every single traffic signal cabinet that we have. They've done initial inspections. They've done their preventative maintenance work, and this month around, they're coming back and actually doing a lot of corrections. You'll see with a lot of our traffic signals, a lot of the bulbs were starting to burn out or get dim. They've replaced those. They've been working on the safety lighting at every single intersection. They've made adjustments to some of the operation of the intersection, specifically here, Foothill and Glendora. They've adjusted timing there. You talked about Pasadena Route 66. They've done some work at Hunter's Trail for us. You'll saw out there today at Lone Hill and Route 66, they were pulling in all-new conductors and getting that cabinet set and ready to go. They'll be back out again tomorrow to do that. So we've been extremely happy with the services they've been providing. They've accomplished more than I could imagine in the last couple of months. In addition to that, they've given us a full inventory of equipment that they believe that we should purchase and have on-site at our Public Works yard, so they can respond quicker. And they've come back with a full list of recommendations just after the first couple of months of where we can go out and make some improvements to the operation of our traffic signals. So I'm confident in the next four months, you will see some significant changes in how well our system's operating. The vehicle detection that we have, they were out as well today with I-Teris, who is managing all of our vehicle detection, and they set up all of those cameras, the radar zones, and the traffic accounts for those. So again, another couple of months, you should see some pretty significant progress in how efficiently our traffic signals are operating.
Great job.
Thank you.
Love it. Thank you. I see. Good.
That's all.
Thank you, Bill. Shawna?
No question for me, but I'm really excited that we're going to be getting some of these lights upgraded.
Okay. Michael?
Thank you for your presentation. I have any questions, but I do want to call out Bill. I thanked him earlier today, but he addressed the Pasadena light within 24 hours and got it fixed, and called DJ over there, and he came up to me today, and he was all excited how quickly it got done and taken care of. So thank you very much. Wanted to do that publicly. Thank you, Bill.
Okay. Thank you. I have no more questions, and thank you, Alou, for presenting. I will entertain a motion to accept the recommendation.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Michael, second by Mendel, and invite us to vote when the ballot hits. There we go. Motion carries five zero. Thank you very much. Brings us to item 18, to award the professional services agreement with Craft Water Engineering, Inc., for the Stormwater Master Plan Project fiscal year 2025-26.
It's a moment of Thanksgiving.
It is. I'm going on Saturday to the game, actually.
We just wanted to put you at ease.
Thank you.
So now you're at ease.
I thought they were looking for a quarterback or something.
No, we have a quarterback. We might be looking for a coach, but don't quote me on that.
Anyway, let me finish that, so she doesn't have to. Master plan for an amount not to exceed $341,895, and presenting all that is management analyst Stephanie Ryan. Welcome, Stephanie.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor, members of city council. My name is Stephanie Ryan, and I'm the environmental services analyst within Public Works. This is my first city council presentation, so thank you. I appreciate that. We're getting through this together. So tonight, I'm bringing an item to award the agreement for the city's stormwater master To provide some background, Measure W, also known as the Safe Clean Water Program, was approved by Los Angeles County voters in 2018. The measure provides annual local return funding to cities to support stormwater and water quality projects. These funds help cities like Glendora meet state and regional requirements under the MS4 permit, which mandates reducing pollutants in stormwater and urban runoff. The city of Glendora receives approximately $900,000 annually for Measure W municipal funding, which the city uses for projects that are identified in our municipal annual plan that is submitted to the Safe Clean Water Program. This year, one of the priority projects is the development of a comprehensive stormwater master plan. The stormwater master plan directly supports the strategic plan objective to improve and maintain the city's infrastructure and facilities. The plan will guide the city's long-term management of its storm drain system and identify necessary repairs and maintenance, as well as future projects to improve drainage, reduce flooding, and enhance water quality. Key objectives of the plan include mapping and assessing the city's existing storm drains through field inspections and CCTV, conducting hydrology and hydraulic modeling, H&amp;H modeling, to identify capacity issues to flood-prone areas, developing a capital improvement plan with recommended projects to improve drainage and water quality, identifying potential funding sources to help implement those projects, and maintain compliance with regulatory requirements. Also, creating standard operating procedures and maintenance guides for city staff for ongoing updates and monitoring of the stormwater plan. So the final deliverables will include a GIS-based inventory that links construction records, inspection results, and photos, an interactive web map, which will identify potential stormwater quality project opportunities, an interactive web map, and then the H&amp;H models for those key prone areas that are key prone to flooding, and a prioritized list of CIP projects, along with our potential funding opportunities. As for the project award, the project was advertised, and a bid opening was held on July 17, 2025. We received three initial bids with ranges approximately from $300,000 to almost $700,000. So following interviews with firms, staff requested that all three submit revised proposals to better align the scope and deliverables of the proposals and to allow for more equitable comparison of them. The revised bids ranged from $341,895 to $407,437. Craft Water Engineering was identified as the lowest responsible bidder, meeting all minimum qualifications, but in addition to that, Craft Water also has strong experience with similar stormwater master planning projects, including with the city of Pasadena. They also have a team of qualified technical staff and extensive experience securing funding opportunities through programs like the Safe Clean Water Program, including the design phase for our own Think Banner Park stormwater capture project. Based on these qualifications, staff recommends awarding the agreement to Craft Water Engineering. Here we have just a table of the final and revised bid results. After staff had requested scope alignment, the three responsive bids ranged as shown And for the cost of the project, the stormwater master plan was originally included as a CIP project for the fiscal year 2425, amended budget in the amount of $250,000. In addition to Craft Water's base bid amount, staff recommends including a 10% contingency to cover minor scope adjustments throughout the project, which brings the total not-to-exceed amount to $376,085. The funding for this project would come from the city's Measure W fund, Fund 250, and staff is requesting a supplemental appropriation of $126,085 to fully fund the project based on these proposed expenditures. The Measure W fund does have sufficient funds to cover this appropriation. And here we are. The recommendation, therefore, is that staff recommends that the city council will award the agreement to Craft Water Engineering for the stormwater master plan in an amount not to exceed $376,085. Authorize the Public Works Director or designate to execute any necessary change orders up to 10%. Authorize the city manager or designate to execute the agreement, and approve a supplemental appropriation from the Measure W fund to fully fund the project. And that concludes my presentation.
Great. Thank you, Stephanie. I'll bring it back for any questions. Shawna?
No questions for me, but good job on your first report. You did fantastic.
Appreciate that.
Mendel?
I would echo that. You did a great job.
Thank you.
Just remember to fight on. So I, you know, I, Michael and Karen and I were on the dais when MS4 was a big, big thing. I mean, I remember, man, we struggled, we sweated it, you know, we argued it, we fought it. I think we were part of a lawsuit, and we've come a long, long way, and I'm glad that we've got funds to, you know, cover this work, and I think it's going to be a really good job. So thank you.
Great. Thank you. Karen?
No questions. Good job.
Michael?
You did a great job. Are you feeling better now?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate his introduction. That helped. Thank you.
No, thank you. As what Mendel had mentioned, this was challenging at the very, very beginning, and all the crazy things that Sacramento wanted us to do, and it was nuts, but thank you so very much.
I do have a question. Storm drain channels and things, and it's working on that. Does it also encompass the curb storm drain collection points that are around town? I've seen it. Good advice, shaking their head yes and a positive back there. Okay, great. Okay. Very good. Well done, and hurry back.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
I move recommendations one through four.
Motion by Michael, second.
Second.
By Mendel, and invite a vote. Good job. Motion carries five zero. Thank you very much. With that, that concludes our agenda items. I'll bring it back for any closing comments or wishes from the parties. Got one over here, Mendel?
Well, I'd just like to express thanks to our entire team, our staff, for all of the lights that are on our trees. What a magical experience to drive and walk, and, you know, this is just really home. And for some of us who've lived here for a long time, I mean, this is a special time of year. So great job. We won't tell the public how much it cost us, because then that takes the magic away. But thank you for doing it. It looks great. And again, I hope everybody has just a wonderful this month and next month. And as Karen said, stop and give thanks, and do, and do thanks. You know, thank friends, family, even those that maybe don't align with everything that you think is right. Give them thanks, and let's just have a good month. Thank you.
Thank you, Mendel. Anyone else?
You may just want to remind the public when our next meeting is because of the holiday.
That would be true. We are dark the rest of the month. We'll meet again December, the second Tuesday of December, December 9. Thank you for that coaching. Appreciate that very much. Hope to see everyone at the holiday stroll on the 21st. That'll be very nice. And any other comments? No?
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving to all, and we will adjourn this meeting in memory of Dr. Pat Bushman at 8:46 PM. Good night, everyone. Thank you for participating.